Good evening. We are going to call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, December 14th, 2022. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. We will begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have a roll call, Mrs. Tagliaferro?
Ms. Arminio. Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella. Ms. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky. Ms. Ratner.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Gerby.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, December 9th, 2022, at all schools, on the district website, published in the Home News Tribune, published in the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Great, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of our minutes. We have the closed session minutes from November 16th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions, comments, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, abstentions, recusals? Okay, great. Our next one is our public board of education minutes from November 16th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions, comments? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Any abstentions? Mrs. Fabiano, any recusals? Yep, okay, great, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our student board members' report. This evening, we have our student board member, Hitvey Thacker, with us. Good evening. Would you like to give your report to the board?
Of course. So, good evening, everyone. Let's start off with Woodland. To reinforce social-emotional learning, Woodland School scheduled an assembly for all students. The theme of this assembly was a kindness quest, where students solve puzzles and explore laser-animated worlds and learn the importance of self-awareness, empathy, and compassion. Student Council and Character Crew organized Toys for Tots Drive and scarves, hats, and gloves drives through the local shelter. In addition, students will be decorating the hallways for the upcoming holiday and winter season. Mrs. Duskovich is coordinating an hour of code in celebration of the Computer Science Education Week. Ms. Yornar, a school psychologist, has organized PALS, Peers Assisting in Learning Social Skills Program, with students. This is an educational program designed as an opportunity for students to serve as peer mentors and are trained in topics such as peer sensitivity and acceptance. Mrs. Newcomb, the school counselor, coordinated a gratitude project for Thanksgiving, where each class says "thank you" to the sign staff member. For Applegarth, the school's band and chorus concert is scheduled for the evening of December 15th at 7:00 PM at the high school. On Thursday, December 8th, Applegarth hosted craft tables at the Unified Winter Fest. December's Principal's Book Club will be held via Zoom on the evening of Wednesday, December 14th. Laura Marinelli, 4th grade teacher, was recognized as Applegarth's Teacher of the Year. Nicole Haddaway was recognized as the Educational Services Professional of the Year, and Pat Sherman, workstation specialist, was recognized as the Educational Support Professional of the Year. Congratulations to all honorees. On December 6th, Applegarth students had a mindfulness and equity assembly through the KYDS organization with the mission to spread awareness of social and emotional learning. Applegarth participated in a gift drive run by MTHS Cheer to provide gifts to children at the Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. Applegarth is involved in a holiday gift drive sponsored by our student council. On December 23rd, Applegarth Student Council will be hosting a snack scale on the half-day. Students will have a game day between now and December 23rd for earning enough fish tickets as part of their school-wide reward. Moving on to Oak Tree, the school had their first celebration day on December 2nd. If students earn enough star points as part of the Rising Stars Positive Behavior Incentive Program, they earn a celebration day. The first celebration day was a game day. The Thanksgiving food drive was an enormous success. The school is now running the gift drive for families in need. Students participated in the holiday shop, where they could purchase gifts for their families on December 7th and 8th. Holiday spirit days are happening now. They include a holiday sock day, flannel day, ugly sweater day, and slippers day. Staff have their own 10 Days of Oak Tree, where each day is a theme ending with Secret Snowman, and winners of the holiday door decorating contest are announced. The Student Advisory Committee, called Falcon Voices, has now begun meeting. Students in Ms. Shaw's class and Grade 3 reps participated in the Unified Winter Festival on December 8th. For Brookside, this past Monday, Brookside had its winter concert. The students put on an amazing performance. Brookside's Family Math Game Night will be held on this Thursday, run by the school's faculty. Students and parents are invited to attend this fun-filled, interactive event beginning at 6:00 PM. For their excellent behavior, students reached their first mark for a school-wide character behavior incentive program. The students earned a pajama day on December 15th. The Barclaybrook and Brookside PTA will be hosting a gingerbread night on December 21st. Brookside raised funds for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation on November 22nd. The Brookside Student Council is sponsoring a food drive between December 6th and December 20th to support local families during holidays. As for the middle school, on December 6th, the 6th grade band concert was held to a packed house and featured very talented students. On December 12th, the computer programming class held their Hour of Code. On December 13th, the Physical Education Department held their Heroes and Cool Kids Program to promote respect and responsibility within the student body. On December 13th, the MTMS held its chorus concert, which was very well-attended and showcased the talented student body. The school is now participating in the Macy's Believe Campaign. The Macy's Believe Campaign is a nationwide campaign that asks students to write letters based on wishes for themselves and the world. For every letter written, Macy's makes a $2 contribution to support the Make-A-Wish Foundation to raise awareness and help critically ill children have their special wishes granted. For the high school, on today, December 14th, the school is hosting its choral concert. On December 3rd, students from various different schools came to MTHS as the school was administering the SAT, providing a gateway to future college opportunities. The Key Club is hosting a hygiene drive throughout the month to aid those in need. And next week, the high school is hosting a spirit week with fun-themed days, including pajama day and tacky Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is a lot. Thank you so much for that comprehensive update. We really appreciate that. Right, our next item on the agenda are our presentations for this evening. This evening, we are happy to have our audit firm, Holman, Frenia, and Allison, HFA, here with us, Mr. Mulligan and his associate, to give us our presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report. So, gentlemen, if you would, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much. I certainly will be able to follow that or have anything, oh, thank you, as fun as those updates. But thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Brian Waldron. I'm a senior audit manager with Holman, Frenia, Allison. As you announced, Rob Mulligan was the supervisor on the job this year, so I wanted to come along as well just to provide an update to the board. We're going to go through the slides. I don't know if you have the slides in front of you on the board up here. I'm just going to flip through a couple of them. There's about five or six slides we're just going to roll through. We had met last week with the Finance Committee in detail to go through this, so any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But a lot of the detail was kind of already dug into. It's about a 200-plus-page report, so there's not too many people here that probably want to really go through all those pages, so we'll go through as quick as possible. See if we can use this thing here. So, as might have been mentioned in the Finance Committee, we still are in a draft format right now. We're still waiting on information from the state of New Jersey related to what we call GASB-75. It's related to other post-employment benefits. This information is provided from the state of New Jersey, and we do not derive it. It's given to us, therefore, we unfortunately do have to wait. As we know in the past, it's been delayed sometimes through February or March, so we may be in a little bit of a waiting game here, but we still wanted to make sure we came to you, presented to you on time, to give you some accurate numbers or real-time numbers, so we're not sitting here next July talking about the '22 school year. So, just want to go through the three opinions that we do offer to you guys. So, we have our first one is our independent auditors' report. It's our most important report. It is our report that shows that you are in accordance with governing auditing standards, department requirements with Department of Education. We have also have in there what you'll see as this emphasis of matter. There was an accounting change this year that we were taking care of, so for anyone that is interested at all and is comparing year to year, you will see differences in our opinion this year, and that was one of those. It's just related to leases that are being handled a little differently this year than in the past. Super accounting, just more work for the accountants to deal with. We have issued an unmodified opinion. It's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion we can give to the district. Just shows that everything is fairly stated in all material aspects. So, again, that's a great sign as far as that goes. Our second report on internal controls over finance, actually, financial reporting and compliance. This is all of the internal controls, everything we have to test for compliance in New Jersey laws and regulations. We found that we had no deficiencies of internal control or compliances that needed to be rendered. So, again, congrats on that. So, it's a clean opinion as well in this report. And our final report that we give to you is our independent report on compliance, internal controls, over what we call major programs. So, the school district receives millions of dollars of federal and state monies year over year, and we have to do testing and compliance over those as well, outside of what the DOE requires us to do. We had tested this year. You can see up there some of the major programs that we tested on both the state and federal side, did significant amount of testing in those areas as well that needs to be reported. And again, and we have an unmodified opinion on this. Again, all those materially stated and no issues of noncompliance or deficiencies to report in any of the federal or state programs that we had tested. I'm only really going to talk about a couple of the highlights and some of the major funds. Our general fund is our major operating fund. I'm just going to talk about the revenues and expenditures at a very high level so the district can see. I'm not sure if you can really see that from here. I'll take a look at this. I definitely can from that far away. I apologize. You'll see, this is our revenue and expenditures on our governmental general fund. And you'll see on the left-side column in 2022, our revenues totaled a little over $124 million compared to $120 million in the previous year. It's roughly a 3% increase. The largest amount of that increase is coming from our state sources across the state. The DOE was giving additional funds for state sources this year, so there was about a $1.7 million increase to your special education aid this year. That was above and beyond what you had received last year. Some of the other areas you'll see there, 2% increase in our tax levy, you know, held true as far as the 2%. So, $3.8 million increased on our revenues, which is, you know, good to see. However, on our expenditure side, again, across the state, this is a kind of a trend. Expenditures, inflation, things are up, things are costing more. We had about a 7.6% increase in our total expenditures. So, when you look at that, it shows that you have a deficit of revenues of $3.3 million in your general fund this year. Does that not mean that we lost $3.3 million? It's just we have our expenditures year over year compared to our revenues here. So, I just want to make that clear. When you're looking at this here, this is just on your operating fund. That comes down to a change in your fund balance of roughly $1.5 million. So, you'll see on the bottom of that, $15,112 was our total fund balances in previous year, down to a $13.5 million total fund balances for the district. Those fund balances are made up of various different funds and reserves, or what we call excess surplus. I'm not going to get into this calculation because no one besides me probably cares about this calculation. However, what you do see here is that you have a, there is a maximum amount that the district's allowed to keep as far as your fund balances. So, you'll see that this calculation here just brings you down to showing your total fund balances, which brings you back to this $13.5 million. When you look at that, that roughly represents about 10% of your overall budget, about $129 million overall budget. So, when you look at that $13 to $14 million there, it's roughly about 11%. And anywhere between 10% to 20% is something that we look forward to see as a healthy or strong overall position. You don't want too much, and you certainly don't want too little. So, when you look at those numbers, there are certain reserves that are set up. There's monies there that are set aside for future budgets as well. So, again, I think the district's in a strong position overall with those finances. And then, the only couple other funds we're just going to talk about are your enterprise funds. Outside of your regular operating districts, the district has enterprise funds, which are self-sustaining, and the largest one we have is our food service fund, our cafeteria fund. You'll see this year is a very big increase from the previous year. Now, everyone knows 2020 and 2021 was very different due to COVID, but this year as well, the DOE has been providing free lunches to everyone, so your reimbursement rates have been gone through the roof. We're seeing districts anywhere from a couple million to $20 million of increased monies from food service funds, which will come back, which you probably have already seen this year, is coming back to normal. But again, there was lots of money, so you'll see that increase of about $780,000 to that. So, we have a $1.6 million total fund balance there. So, the district certainly is able to and is, from what I'm told, going through and doing capital expenditures and using those funds to better the improvement of the food service fund. However, that money was just kind of coming in pretty quickly and pretty heavy. So, use that, continue to charge through expenditures, doing everything that you're already doing, but that will start to come back down as we move forward into the next couple of years. And the two other enterprise funds you have here, your child, early childhood program, and then, I think it's, believe your Falcon program. You're going to see as I flip through, the years from 2021 to 2022. The differences are dramatically different, right? Obviously, with programs either shutting down or being significantly down, I've slipped to the other one here. So, the norm of the 2022 is much more of where we're going to be seeing things moving forward and also where they were prior to our COVID, we'll say, COVID year. But again, increases here. We always like to see our enterprise funds making money. They're not supposed to be funded from the district. So, again, when you look at these and see some negatives, that was kind of across the board in previous years, all across the state, as districts were struggling to keep these programs available and open to their students. Other than that, I don't have, I mean, I could sit up here for a long time, and I know you have a lot more important business to take care of. We'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. We do appreciate your time. We appreciate Laura and the team helping everyone to go through and do our audit process this year. Like I said, we will continue this a little bit, unfortunately, into the new year until we get a little bit more information from the state. But other than that, we're in pretty good shape with having everything wrapped up. So, we thank you very much again for your time. If there are any questions, again, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, does any of our board members have any questions? Okay, well, I don't think so. So, thank you very much for taking the time out tonight and coming to our board meeting and presenting this to us. We appreciate everything that you have done, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to get this completed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Happy holidays.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you. Okay, our, we have a resolution I know that we need to read now.
It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education accept and approve the annual comprehensive financial report and the auditor's management report on administrative findings, financial compliance, and performance, and hereby approve and authorize the submission of the required corrective action plan to the county office indicating that there are no recommendations for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Questions? Any questions? Mrs. Bierman.
All right, so I'm confused. I did not know about this resolution. We haven't actually seen the report, so what are we voting on? We've only seen draft pieces of it.
This is, we did the same thing in the prior year, but we do have the management report, and we're really just proving that there are no recommendations.
Just a part of the findings. So, it's only the findings that's really bundled in here, not the other 200 pages, a lot of the Mitch McGosh.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great, thank you very much. Our next presentation is our presentation of plaques to our outgoing board members. Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Arminio, and Mr. Nikotinsky, unfortunately, all three are ill and unable to attend this evening. So, we do have their plaques here. I will read the plaque. Actually, I'll read what I intended to read if they were here. All right, this is to Ms. Arminio, Mr. Chiarella, and Mr. Nikotinsky. Surveying your community in an effort to make a difference for the good of the school district is always commendable. Nothing prepares you for running an election for public office or what comes after you are elected. Many do not understand that these are unpaid positions that require many, many hours away from our families and our other personal responsibilities. But we come without question each month, and we do what we perceive is in the best interest of the greater good. Tonight, I'm honored to give these plaques to three outstanding community members who have served the Monroe Township School District as a board of education member. Each one of you helps shape our district through the countless hours at committee meetings and board meetings that have gone into the following morning sometimes. Ken Chiarella, Michelle Arminio, and Adi Nikotinsky, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to extend our sincerest thanks to you for all of your service to Monroe Township and wish you all the best in everything you do. Ken, I met you as a kindergarten mom at the Barclaybrook-Brookside PTA meeting when you first ran for the Board of Education. I remember thinking to myself, wow, a dad at a PTA meeting? This guy really cares about our schools. You won your first election to the Board of Education that year, and if I calculated it correctly, you have served 15 years as a board of education member. I could probably speak for hours listing each time you stood up for what you felt was in the best interest of our students and our staff. Personally, I think one of the greatest accomplishments was getting Monroe heard through your hard work as the Chair of the Fair Funding Ad-Hoc Committee. Your passion and drive made a real impact. I present this plaque to you in appreciation for all you have done as a Monroe Township Board of Education member, and I wish you all the best. Michelle, I can still remember meeting you in the audience here at Board of Education meetings where you were recording the meetings. You challenged me as a member of the public to get more involved and made me see the importance of coming to all township meetings, not just the Board of Education. Your desire for open government is second to none, and I hope we will continue to see you as an active member of our community, advocating for what you feel is in the best interest of Monroe. Thank you for all you have done in the nine years as a board member. Your service is appreciated by so many in our community. I present this plaque to you in appreciation for all you have done as a Monroe Township Board of Education member and wish you all the best. Adi, it seems like you were on the board longer than three years. Your contributions as a board member these last three years have made a positive impact on our community. You came in and on day one said you weren't a rubber stamp, and you weren't. You have helped make some many positive changes as a board member, and for that, I want to say thank you. I present this plaque to you in appreciation for all you have done as a Monroe Township Board of Education member and wish you all the best. So, we will have these plaques sent to their homes personally, and the plaque does say, presented in sincere appreciation for dedicated service to the students and the schools of Monroe Township while serving as a board member of the Monroe Township Board of Education. Ken, 2017 through 2022. I think there was probably yours before that. But, so we will give each one of them their plaques and, again, thank them for their service. I wish they were here this evening. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Any committee chairs wishing to give a report? Anyone?
You can start.
And Mrs. Bierman?
I don't know where to start. We had a lot of illness this month. And I think I went to five of the six, and I'm going to give my usual finance report and then attempt to give the curriculum report. Are you going to do BGNT?
I can.
Or I can try that, too, but we'll see. All right. Finance Committee met on December 7th. It was just... Were you even there? Yeah. I left you off the notes. Me, Michelle, and Chrissy. First item was a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report. Presentation, same presentation pretty much that you saw here. We were giving those slides. Bob Allison from HFA, our audit provider, circulated those pieces of the draft and gave the committee the presentation and explanation of the audit for the year ending June 30, 2022. Same presentation that's made at the December meeting tonight. It's still in draft status pending the typical data needed from the state to finalize and submit. The district is receiving an unmodified opinion, and we thank Ms. Allen and the business office staff for their contributions to facilitating the audit team throughout that process. Next item was the monthly review of the attorney fees. October 2022 attorney invoices totaled $14,865, O proportion being $420. The, another high item there was the labor negotiations category, which we would expect as we go through those negotiations. For October, that was a little over $3,000. Next item was the monthly review of the bill list. As of the committee meeting, the bill list for review and approval presented as $4,131,268.76. The addendum right prior to tonight's meeting puts an additional $761,947.43 on that. Committee confirmed review and oversight to the bill list, and any questions that we had were satisfied. Next item was an audit update. Ms. Allen indicated the auditors would still be making some last-minute inquiries to tie up loose ends and then waiting for those numbers from the state to finalize the report. And until that pending GASB-75 data is received from the state, the report remains in draft mode. It will then be finalized and submitted in compliance with the laws. Next item was a budget update. The committee was provided with an update to the budget process by district administration. Ongoing defense round meetings with the building stakeholders are happening currently. The budget continues to be crafted and fine-tuned and should be presented in preliminary state to the board at the March meeting. And the last item, the committee reviewed a proposed contract with North Brunswick Township for utilization of their aquatics pool to supplement our existing provider contract to facilitate hosting meets and extra practice time. The committee is satisfied with the district need and recommends contract for approval, and you'll see that up for vote tonight in the business administrator's report. And as always, please be sure to watch the video of the committee meeting to color in more details on any of these topics. My notes serve as an overview and a highlight opportunity for items requiring votes for progression. And that's the committee.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Bierman? Okay, our next committee report.
I'm going to take a stab at curriculum. So, Curriculum Committee met on December 7th. We're a little light there, too. I think it was just Michelle, Chrissy, and me, that one for board representation. We had what you'll see to vote on curriculum documents, which were in our packets for review, and also, please make sure, if you haven't, that you watched the video. Mrs. Drust delivered the details on updates to the curriculum for civics, for Grade 7 science, for applied physics, for physics, for honors physics, and for honors anatomy and physiology. And the one thing I would say of substance there, I'm not a normal curriculum committee member, but she did take time to explain the difference between applied physics, physics, and honors physics and how we deliver them in our curriculum to the students and how it provides this broad spectrum of access to all students. It was worth understanding that and that concept of, you know, getting your child into the program that they're best suited for. Dr. Rozell presented the updated curriculum for Spanish, grades 3 to 5. And Mrs. Gasko, she presented on grade 6 mathematics. After the curriculum documents, we had discussion items on summer programming and on STEM activity, both worth watching on the video. There's nothing that we're voting on with either of those programs, but they're both developing an interesting conversation as the district moves forward with, you know, what they're crafting for being able to have these offerings to the children. One coming up very soon, the summer programming. We'll include that the STEM was for this year or for next year?
This year.
This year. So, that one's even coming up quicker than the summer programming. But both exciting programs and opportunities for the kids. And then, I think in curriculum, we also discussed the swim contract and the reason for why we needed to have this supplemental facility activated with this contract. for why we needed to have this supplemental facility activated with this contract. And that was that.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Spearman? No? Okay. Thank goodness. Any other committees wishing to give a report? Yes?
I was able to attend personnel, so via phone, but I was able to be there. So, the personnel meeting was held on December 7th at 8:00 PM, and we reviewed the vacancy list, which it shows a list of about 42 positions open, various reasons. We have LOAs, we have some transfers. We had six LOAs, 10 transfers, 16 resignations, six retirements, and there were five new positions added in there. And those were discussed in the Personnel Committee meeting. We also have our exit information sheet, and we have exit information from six people, three accepted positions in another district. One is a retirement. The other one is, did not indicate why they were leaving. They just decided to leave. The superintendent gave us her personnel report and talked about four part-time school security officers so that we can have increased security in the building, particularly around when there are events happening in the building off school hours and making sure that our children who come here for rec and come here for post-school things are also protected and have security. So, we've increased that coverage to have that. We talked about the rate of pay for substitute teachers, paraprofessional substitute secretaries, and I do believe some of that is on the agenda this evening for the board. And then there's administrative retirement replacement of the supervisor position with an alternate option. So, we discussed an option where we are going to have a Director of Human Resources and Compliance Job Description, which we reviewed, and coming before the board tonight for approval, and then a Director of Innovative and Equity Programs, Community Relations, Partnerships, and Career Technology Job Description. It's a mouthful, but both of those job recommendations or job descriptions are in the information for the board members since Friday, and so that is up for and recommended by the Personnel Committee to take the superintendent's recommendation. The last thing that we talked about was Assistant Business Administrator, and for that position, we had 18 applicants. We interviewed five of them. Two of them were CPAs. We only interviewed one CPA. The other CPA did not have any experience at all, and we did choose a candidate who is on the agenda for this evening. In risk of butchering the first name, I'm just going to say the last name is Ms. Rupa. She comes to us highly recommended with an extensive background in public school finance and budgeting. She has an MBA degree in business management and a certificate of eligibility as a school business administrator. She is a Certified Educational Facilities Manager, as well as a Registered Public Purchasing Specialist, which allows for a higher bid threshold. In her many years at Newark Board of Education, she has been involved with purchasing, budgeting, staff training, payroll, financial reporting, accounts payable, grants, and human resources. So, the Personnel Committee does recommend that the board as a whole approve her this evening for the Assistant Business Administrator position, which I do believe is starting January if we approve, right? So, that is the Personnel Committee report. Does anyone have any questions?
Hi, I have a question about the, one of the new positions.
Okay, yes, Mr. Retner.
So, yes, first of all, I apologize for not being there in person. I am glad that I am able to participate remotely. I'm getting over double pneumonia for those who are unaware. Anyhow, so my question, I did want to clarify the new role, the Director of Innovative and Equity Programs, Community Relations, Partnerships, and Career Technology. That's quite a mouthful. I wanted to clarify, is that a position that is taking place of another position, or is that an additional position that will be added on?
No, the administrator, the superintendent is recommending that we split a job that is being done right now by a person who's retiring. And believe it or not, by splitting these jobs and the job duties, we will also be saving the district funds. But the person who was doing this job previously did it very well, but she was one person, and really what she was doing was the job of two people. So, we're trying to put some equity around that and get some other items in there. So, it's basically, it's a two-for-one, but it's also going to save the district some money.
Okay, so is this, this is not in lieu of the grants and HIB position that's still there?
Mr. Chanley?
So, the grants position is going to be part of the Director of Human Resources responsibilities. She comes to us, she's been here approximately now six years, I believe, Ms. Christie. She comes to us with 12 years' experience from the Courtyard School District where she was writing grants, so that will become now part of her responsibilities. The HIB coordinator or district coordinator will remain with this new position. It's not something we put on the title because it's not currently on the title, so therefore I did not add it to this current title as well.
Okay, I was looking over the job performance, and I didn't see it listed there either as one of the responsibilities. I just, I know that's a very important role, and I want to make sure that the person who's doing that, you know, has that not only listed as a required responsibility, but it's also has experience in that area because it's not really listed there as part of the qualifications.
I could speak on that if I may, if you've finished. I didn't want to interrupt.
Sure. And I guess want to say the other thing, you know, I'm very happy to hear that Ms. Christie has that experience. I also just know that going forward, we always want to try to create job descriptions to the position, not necessarily to the person, because you never know what person is going to be in that role in the future. So, I guess we would have to make sure, you know, hopefully Ms. Christie will be here for a number of years, but when she retires, then we'd have to find someone else who has that same type of experience in addition to human resources, which concerns me a little bit. That's all I had to say.
Okay, so I'm going to answer your, I don't think it was necessarily a question, it was more like your comment, so I'm going to comment on your comment. Although I do agree that it's wonderful when we have somebody in-house that has the experience, we also have to take hold of what experiences we do have, and we need to capitalize when we have people in-house currently doing other roles that have experiences. Of course, people change roles every day, anybody at any time. I always say something positive could win the lotto and then not come back. But at this time, we have to capitalize on someone's experience, and we're fortunate that we have someone currently working for the district that has quite extensive experience in the grant. So, that was my first choice, so that's a comment to your comment. The second thing is, the reason why you're not going to see it in the job description is we have certain positions. For example, we have also the position that Dr. Lehman holds, which is affirmative action. It is not listed in his job description. What happens is at a certain time of the year, it gets board-approved that he would then stand as the officer of a certain position. So, you will not see that this particular position says District HIB Coordinator intentionally because that is something that would get approved, and it can go to a number of people, and it doesn't have to fall under the position that it's currently under. So, that is why you would not see it as a job description. And as far as being appropriately prepared to do the job, all HIB district coordinators will get extensive training from the state of New Jersey. And just so you know, and I know that you worked in a school system, I'm not sure when the particular requirement came out, but at any time, that position could be changed to anybody else, and that's why it's a yearly appointment similar to what Dr. Lehman gets appointed for, and you would not see in the job description. So, I hope that satisfies your question.
Okay, yeah, certainly. Thank you for clarifying. I would just think that if right now we're planning to give this to this person, we would want that to be a qualification that there was the experience there. But if the plan is potentially to give it to another qualified individual, then I could certainly understand your point.
Kate, this is just to approve the job description? There's nobody on the agenda to approve. This has to go, the job description gets approved, then it gets posted, then the administration holds interviews, and then they make a recommendation for a candidate. This is just a rewritten job description.
Right, that's why I was mentioning that the listed qualifications, it's not a specific person. My point was that...
Right, but as Ms. Chanley explained, it's not, it's not, it's not part of that job description. It's not, it can be anybody in the district appointed to that. It's not specific to the person in that role right now. All right, are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Spearman?
Yeah, on the substitute rates, I just want to confirm. So, we're voting that it's an extension till June 30th, 2023, of the rates that are not increasing but were previously increased, and they, so the rates actually hold at the 130, 135, and 140, correct?
That is correct, and thank you for providing that qualification.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other questions for Mrs. Belko? Any other committees wishing to give a report? Ms. Fabiano?
On Tuesday, December 6th, the Community Engagement and Communication Committee met. Present were myself, I was present virtually, Ms. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Kirby, Ms. Scott, and Mr. Maralda. Mr. Maralda shared with the members who were present here in the media center some displays and the QR code that will be printed and accessible to members of the community. With the code, community members will be able to scan it and be connected to a referendum website that will share updates regarding the project. There was talk about the possibility of putting together a commercial and sending out communication to the HOAs and other various groups who may be willing to host us for a presentation of the referendum. Next on the agenda, we discussed our relationship with Jamesburg and how Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Vilani are continuing their collaboration to bring the students closer together. Ms. Chanley mentioned a possible meeting with curriculum supervisor in Jamesburg to discuss how we can better align our students from grades K through eight. It was also discussed the possibility of bringing the eighth graders over sooner, maybe around February, prior to the eighth grade trip. Next on the agenda, we discussed the letter revision to legislators. Ms. Kirby stated that she would further revise what she shared and present to the board before it is posted to the district website. And then lastly, we discussed the Township Liaison. This would be a member of the board who would attend Township Council meetings and report back to the board. It was said that this would be something that would be discussed for the reorganization meeting on January 3rd, and someone would be appointed for that role. That's my report.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Spearman?
Just, I did send an email earlier today. I just wanted to make sure the presentation that happened during that meeting, if that could be at least circulated to the board members?
I don't, I wasn't, I don't have it either.
But as the committee chair, you could get access to it and circulate it?
Yes, if it's sent to me, I could absolutely share it. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and the last committee, I believe, is BGNT. So, BGNT Committee met and discussed, Mr. Take discussed the Troy and Banks utility rebates. One of the big items that we discussed that night was referendum marketing. We saw some ads that the previous administrations have utilized in other bond referendums for our schools, and there was a significant discussion amongst the board members there as well as Mr. Tag and the administration, Ms. Chanley, and Dr. Lehman. There was an animated advertisement used in the last campaign for referendum that was not successful, and they replayed that ad for us, and we saw some possible ads from another animation company, and the committee decided not to move forward with going with an animated advertisement. So, we had asked that the administration and Mr. Tag look into doing something maybe in-house through maybe the video production or graphic, our graphic students to come up with something and use more of real-life, real-life shots or clips. Mrs. Chanley speaking, principals at the schools that were going to be going out for the referendum, going through those buildings, maybe showing the Algarve Boiler, going through the middle school and showing some issues there, clips here in the high school to make it more personable of what is actually going to be affected by this referendum. So, I know the administration said they would go back and work on that and then come back, I guess, to the full board with that. And I think that was pretty much the majority of the discussion. Yes, Ms. Belko?
So, it's not so much a question, but it's a comment, and it's not a committee that I've been on. But I would like to caution the committee in whatever we do for referendum, you know, advertising is that we be careful about what we put out there as far as what floor plans look like, where the egresses are, where the entrances and exits are. We do not provide the public with a floor map or, you know, and I know it's a bone of contention when freshmen come in here because they don't have a map, but we do that on purpose. Because if we put a map out online, we're inviting those out there to plan and plot to be able to come in and do us harm. I am definitely not a sky's falling kind of person. I, you know, pretty much come what may, but when it comes to the security and safety of the students in this district and our schools, I just want that we're mindful of that as we're presenting. I know we need to present to the public what we're doing, and we have some beautiful pictures, you know, architect renderings in the back, and we definitely need to put it out there, but we have to be very careful. And I see the teachers around the table nodding their head. They totally understand and they get it. So, I just want to, that's a, you know, I want to make that a comment from, you know, from me as a board member, that we need to be cautious of that and just be careful.
Yes, absolutely, and you know me, I am the sky's falling person. So, I appreciate that coming from you, Katie, and that is something I know that has been discussed, and as you noted, it is not on that, and there has been criticism from members of the public, and I'm glad you brought that exactly to light of why we have not been publicizing the floor plans. I know going forward, we will explain and where we can show what additions will look like, explain where the additions are going to go, but you're absolutely right, providing extensive floor plans is a safety issue. It absolutely is. In today's day and age, putting that out there on social media gives anybody the opportunity to know our building, understand our building, come into our building, and we have to do, we have to err on the side of safety of our children sometimes. Ms. Boran, yes?
I missed the meeting as I was traveling, so I wanted to take a moment to share my comment on the multimedia ads, that ads or videos, great ideas in the meeting. I kind of concur with everybody in the committee. I just wanted to add that we have a lot of in-house talent, and we need more variety than the same piece being, you know, there is a lot of talent, plus there's a lot of people that can speak to it. So, if we could harness our students in the graphic arts department and curate content for the different demographics in Monroe. Monroe's, as a town, has four different demographics that we need to cater to, and we, we have 18-year-old voters and that we should be, you know, harnessing into, but at the same time, we have 90-year-old voters, so they will both consume different types of content. We do have the brains in the high school itself to create that, and I was just going to emphasize that when we do start creating, we should have a variety. 30 seconds, one minute, two minutes, that's all we need for every piece of content, but different demographics consumes different type of content, and if we could be mindful of that, so.
Yes, and I know Ms. Scott brought that up in the meeting as well about utilizing Instagram and other social media platforms and the need for that as well. So, yes, absolutely, we will, the administration is asked to look into that. Ms. Spearman?
So, I just wanted to highlight on the item that we are voting on, which is that Troy and Banks rebates contract. Basically, it's a company that will come in and audit the invoices of our utilities and look for opportunities we may have missed that are exclusive to school districts and stuff where they're experts at this, and they're able to recognize where we might have overpaid or been overcharged and thus overpaid, and they can get refunds back and they take a cut, I think it's 20 or 22% of anything they recover. And so, it seemed like a no-brainer to the committee to pass it, you know, forward and let the board vote on that to get that going. So, I just want to make sure everyone was clear on what that item was and no hesitation to vote.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, and we covered all of our committees, correct?
I think policy.
Oh, policy, yes.
You can just mention on that one, the Policy Committee did meet on December 6th. There wasn't anything that was coming down the pike from Strauss S.M., though the committee chair, Michelle Arminio, had reached out to the Strauss S.M. attorneys and were aware that in the coming weeks, there were going to be some changes to some of these security policies, so she thought we should meet as a committee and start reviewing them so that we were more familiar with them when that did come down. And I think, you know, so we went through a bunch of those policies. There's nothing to vote on, and as a committee, we just decided that once we get the alerts from Strauss S.M., we would want to have a more in-depth meeting and loop in interaction with the Security Director and do a much deeper dive into these policies.
Right, yep, and we're still awaiting that from Strauss S.M. Does anybody have any questions regarding policy? Okay, seeing none, that ends our committee reports. The next item on our agenda is the public forum for our agenda items only. Anybody wishing to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name and municipality.
Anybody wishing to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes to speak. Are we having anybody wishing to speak at public forum? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
So in the spirit of moving things along, I have a brief report tonight. I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. Enjoy the break that's up and coming, think it's well-earned. We had a busy fall and early winter kind of season so far. We had a concert here tonight, we have one more tomorrow night at Woodland, I believe, and actually, I'm just going to look here. Wednesday, let's see, I had it here. Tomorrow's Applegarth, so we have one more tomorrow at Applegarth, and then the remaining concerts are going to be after the holiday break. We have middle school concerts coming up, and we welcome you to attend. The exact schedules, locations, times are on the district website. There's a little calendar, you can take a look there. And the other highlight is all of our winter athletics are up and running as well. Everything from swimming to basketball to volleyball to wrestling to indoor track, bowling, ice hockey, and we have a tremendous amount of co-curricular offerings. So again, if you're interested in enjoying one of those events, the schedule for that is located on the district webpage under the Athletics tab. So enjoy the time. If you have time over the break, come see us play and, you know, join us for whatever games you're interested in and support our Falcons. That's it.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
I'd like to first start off by wishing everybody happy holidays and happy new year because the next time we get back together again, it will be a new year for us. I would like to also state, I always like to say, wishing everyone health, happiness, and peace, but I've decided to add kindness to that. I think kindness is something that I'm seeing now throughout the buildings. No place for hate. Bring back kindness. It's very, it's something very simple. I know we have a kindergarten teacher here with us, and I will tell you that the first thing that you learn in kindergarten is to be kind to others, so I could only hope that we keep that with us as a belief as we continue into the new year. And, you know, we should all enjoy time with family and friends, and for those of you going on trips, I wish you safe travels for those that are able to make the trip. And I will continue with positive thoughts by wishing a happy retirement. We have three retirements coming up. One is Ms. Lori McConnell, which we mentioned. She is currently our supervisor of grants, testing special projects. She also serves as the HIB district coordinator. I have been fortunate to work with her very closely in different capacities. When I was the principal, when I was the assistant principal, she did also oversee Tag. It was something talented and gifted program that we worked very closely together on, and I wish her well. I know that she has, she has shared with me that she has sisters that she's looking forward to spending quality time with, and by not having to come to work and be responsible to anybody but herself, I wish her a happy and healthy retirement. Accordingly, we also have Ms. Rosa Serrano, who I have had the pleasure of working with as our occupational therapist. She was housed in very different, quite a few different buildings. She's currently mainly at the middle school, and she would be leaving her post and also retiring to spend time with family. She has shared with me that she goes on a very regular basis to her home state of Puerto Rico. It is, it is, it is a Commonwealth, but it's one of our states, so the United States, and she will be doing that on a more regular basis, actually relocating there. I had a very nice conversation with her. She came to me personally to let me know about the retirement, so I wish her well. And our third retirement is Mr. Joseph Capodanno. He is a bus driver, and we know that when our bus drivers retire, we wish them peace and quiet, because we know that they don't get any of that. They are very, very special to us, bus drivers. They are just, they perform a job that I could never do, and we have to wish him well. So on that note, I'm very happy, once again, to thank the staff. We have a lot of administrators here in the back. I want to thank them for their continued support as they come to our Board of Education meetings and as they continue as the leadership team to work very hard. I want to wish all of the staff, inclusive of teachers and all different roles, all of the students, and of course, the community members, once again, you know, health, happiness, peace, and kindness. At this time, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through U, and that is for a 10-member vote.
Can I get a motion? Motion, second. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Tagley, fair? Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio is not present. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
And Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. It is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items V through A-Y, and that is for a nine-member vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on A.G.
So noted. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. It is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items A to N, and that is for a 10-member vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Are there any questions? Can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse just on A for Ms. Chanley, and I'm going to vote no specifically on I for that one role, the Director of Innovative and Equity Programs Revision.
So noted. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes to all, no on item D.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items O through U, and that is for a nine-member vote.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
No on S, yes on all others.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and looking forward to seeing everybody in a happy and healthy new year.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our Business Administrators' Report. Ms. Allen?
I just wanted to mention that we did get several grants from the Special Olympics. So every school, except for one, we did receive grants ranging from $1,000 to $20,000. And also, we received a donation from the Sikh Sabbath of New Jersey for $2,152 to be used by the High School Sikh Student Association. And it is recommended that the board action items A through K be approved by a 10-member vote.
Motion.
Second. Are there any questions for Ms. Allen? All right, seeing none, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, then, it's recommended that board action items L through M be approved by consent, roll call by a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second. Are there any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please? Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right, our next item on our agenda is our Board President's Report. First, I'd like to begin by recognizing all of our staff that is here this evening in the back, our administrators, supervisors. Thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate your support, and we're here to support you be successful in your buildings and your roles in our district. So thank you for being here this evening. I also want to recognize our Teachers of the Year, our Educational Service Professionals of the Year, Educational Support Staff of the Year. I know that Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman visited each school to recognize them. The Board of Education will invite them all to an upcoming meeting in the spring where we can all properly congratulate them as well. I'd also like to congratulate Gazala Bora, Katie Fabiano, and Kate Ratner on receiving their new Board Member Boardmanship Certification through the New Jersey School Boards Association, Board Member Academy for completing a minimum of 10 credits in their first year as a board member. So congratulations. As we come to the end of another year, I want to thank all of our board members for their service to our community. When we look back on this year, I think we can be proud as a board of what we have accomplished. As the budget process continues, I want to clear up a few misconceptions in the public. At no time during the Budget Philosophy Meeting or any subsequent committee meeting or board meeting did the board direct the administration to not put anything new into the budget. For many years during the budget process, the parents would hear that there were going to be cuts, whether to buses, programs, clubs, et cetera, because we did not have the money to budget for it. Things were taken out, and parents came to the meetings and asked for them not to be cut. What I personally asked as a board president was if the administration saw a need to cut any program or service currently offered. The answer was no. I do not think one person sitting here tonight on this board would be against adding any new course or new program or new service that was in the best interest of the students in this school district. We are already talking about a pilot program called the Winter of STEM to begin this, in the coming months. To say that this board is against pushing for more for our students simply is false. I want to thank Ms. Allen, Mrs. Chanley, and Dr. Lehman for their hard work and collaboration during this budget process and look forward to the recommendations to the board as we move along in the budget process. Finally, I look forward to the new year and continued board service to our school district. I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season, and I look forward to our reorganization meeting on January 3rd. That concludes my report. And our next item on the agenda is other board business. Anybody have anything that they'd like to bring forth? Ms. Bierman?
Yeah, only item is, even though they're not here, I would like to reiterate the thanks to the outgoing board members, to Ken and Adi and Michelle. All three have served as role models for me on and off throughout the two years that I've been serving, and certainly for many years before that, and I wish them well, and hopefully, maybe we'll see them back, if not at the podium, maybe in the future. And then also, look forward to that reorganization meeting and welcoming new members and seeing what 2023 is going to bring, because it's going to be exciting.
Anybody else? Ms. Bora?
I'll piggyback on that. As I complete my first year of being a board member, I look back at the people who inspired me and gave me the courage or challenged me to come to the side of the podium, and Michelle Arminio and Ken Shirela top that list. They've always inspired. I've learned a lot from them, and I had the honor of serving on the board with them for one year, 12 years, I think, for Ken, and nine years for Michelle. As I'm finishing one year, that seems like a really tall order, and so heartfelt thanks on behalf of the community personally for the time they've given. Adi, like you said, changed the course of the way the board did business by starting out as not being a rubber stamp, and I have a lot of respect for the changes that Adi brought about. So Mr. Nikadinsky, also, thank you for the time you've given to the board, so. And I wish you all good health. I hope you were here for your last meeting, but whenever, and if you are listening in, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Happy holidays to everybody.
Anybody else?
I have something to say.
Ms. Ratner?
I, thank you. I, first of all, obviously, I want to wish everyone happy holidays as well. I do want to congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year. Being to be chosen by your peers as a role model is definitely something worth celebrating, so congrats to our Teachers of the Year as well as the Educational Support Members and Support Staff of the Year as well. And then I also just wanted to highlight a couple of things regarding the Delegate Assembly. Unfortunately, due to illness, I was not able to attend in person. However, I was able to watch it, and a lot of it was more information-based. There weren't many policies or regulations that affect our district personally, but I do think that some interesting things that were mentioned is some of the things that they are going to be bringing to board members. One thing is going to be having online communities for board members to network, which I think is extremely important, and I think specifically, this will be something good for us if we want to try to network with other board members who might be dealing with funding issues throughout the state. They said board members can create a community exclusive to anything they desire, as long as it's appropriate, obviously. And they also mentioned, because a lot of times when you might call to the call center, you may not be sure where it is, they're going to be adding Zendesk, which board members will get a ticket to keep track of their requests or questions so that they'll know when it's answered. So I did just want to make them aware. They also mentioned, I know we had several board members who attended workshop. They actually said there were 6,000 board members throughout the state, and administrators and other individuals, as well as, I think, about 350 vendors. And so I think that it's wonderful that we were able to attend that again, and they had mentioned they're already planning for next year, so I just wanted to share that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Fabiano, you had your hand up before?
Yes, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here at the table. I also wanted to congratulate all of the staff award recipients. It's truly an honor to achieve that award and to earn it from your peers, so just thank you and congratulations to all of you for your service to our students and our community. You should all be very proud of that award. I also want to thank our outgoing board members. It's been an honor to serve this past year with all of them, and I'm looking forward to the reorganization in January. And I just wanted to also wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. I know there are so many things that are going around right now, as you can see, it's taking us out slowly, but hopefully, good things to come in the new year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Scott?
I'd just like to say I wish I had gotten to work with the three outgoing board members a little longer, but it was great to work with them, and I wish all three of them the best, and everyone a happy, and again, congratulations to all of the teachers that were awarded as well. Congratulations to the Kate and Kate, Fabiano and Ratner, and Ms. Gazala for getting your certified new board member certification, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, our next item on our agenda is our public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any items, feel free to come to the microphone, state your name and municipality, and you have four minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Linda Wazowski, Monroe Township, Rossmore to be specific. I have four things I would like to talk about just briefly tonight. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our music department. Mr. Maralda and I have been playing email tag. Dr. Lehman has been aware of that. Rossmore Music Association would very much enjoy having some of our incredibly talented music students entertain us, and of course, we know we cannot charge for such an event, but we would be happy to do at-will offerings, and the money would come back to whatever organization it is within the music department so we can help support the music department. I'm also trying to give away an electronic keyboard, but Mr. Maralda and I keep playing tag. My next issue or question is, and I know I have to ask the questions first, where are we on our DOE approval for our referendum? I haven't seen anything lately, and I would like to reiterate the Legal Women Voters invitation to host any presentation that we can coordinate with you in favor of supporting the referendum. Where are we with the approval? And who should we, we who, we, Legal Women Voters contact to follow up on a presentation? For the last time, I will mention the survey. Six times I've stood here and mentioned the survey, and as of yesterday, the results were still not there. I've read through most of what the survey results have been on the Oprah machine, and I have to say, I think there's a very serious lack of transparency on the part of this entire board in not making those results public, because it can easily be perceived, I think, as a lack of interest in the opinions of the residents who took the time to do it. My last question, my second question, is with these upcoming messy charges and lawsuits and everything else that's going on here in the board, is the Board of Education taking any responsibility relative to attorney fees in defending any of these charges? Those are my two questions. Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I believe the first question, the referendum, I will ask Mrs. Chanley if you would like to answer that.
So I want to state, and I stated this as well, and you could watch it on the video, that I thank the Women League of Voters. You were the first person, I actually made the statement that we absolutely will come, and I am waiting, as I've said repeatedly, till January when we return from the holiday to send out a standard letter, "Hi, I'm Mrs. Chanley and Superintendent of Schools. If you invite us, we will come."
Thank you, great.
So 100%, we will be convenient to your schedule. If it's convenient to our schedule, we're very accommodating.
We'll work it out.
So absolutely, the League of Women Voters is one place that we will go to.
Thank you.
So I would say around January 5th or 6th, and I see Ms. Fabiana shaking her head because she knows that I've said this over and over again, it's going to be a standard letter, the same to everybody. Anybody who invites us will come. As far as where we're at, we're in the queue.
Good.
And that's the term. We're in the queue for the processing of the referendum. So I hope that answers that question.
Good, thank you, yes.
You're very welcome. So the League of Women Voters is number one on our list.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that when I send the email, it'll be sent to you?
You can send it to the email for the League of Women Voters, Monroe Township.
Okay, that'll be fine.
It's on our website.
Right.
And I did relay to the Board of the League of Women Voters last week when we had our meeting that I had extended the invitation to the Board and that you've responded favorably.
Yes, absolutely.
So they were very pleased. They're very pleased.
And if anybody has any questions, I don't know if you write for your newspaper in your community, but if anybody asks and they would like some sort of a presentation, you can send it right to shari.chanley@monroe.k12.us.
Great, thank you, good.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Right, and I'm sorry, the second question that you had?
The other question was about attorney fees relative to some of our legal issues here.
If you would like to answer that, Mr. Gagliardi?
I certainly would. So I don't know that any of the lawsuits that you're mentioning are lawsuits in which the district is the plaintiff. That is to say, the district or district officials get sued. They're not filing the suit, so the district is not looking to spend money on legal fees.
Okay.
Most of the outstanding suits involve ethics issues. The district has insurance coverage to cover those, so other than the $5,000 deductible, those are not costing the district money on legal fees. The carrier is handling those.
That's good.
There are very few, I can think of three lawsuits in which at this time there is no coverage. Two of the three suits are suits of, in essence, involving personal injuries going back many years. There's no available insurance, so there's nothing the district can do about that. And the other lawsuit that I can think of off the top of my head is in abeyance. It was designed to address certain actions the board took. I happen to think if that lawsuit were to be resuscitated, it would be dismissed as moot, but that's not costing the district anything right now. That suit has been dormant for several months.
Okay, thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
Certainly.
And I'd like to wish all of you a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, Carmen Alvarez, 8 Millwood Court, Monroe Township. How are you? I have a few comments I want to make, not any questions. When I first began my career as a school social worker 23 years ago, I happened to be assigned to work in my neighborhood school. While there were many benefits to this assignment, including being able to walk to work, going home on my lunch hour, and recognizing the immediate needs of the community, there were also quite a few challenges. As an example, I was asked to schedule a meeting with a parent of a child who was caught stealing cookies off her classmate's lunch tray. Unfortunately, this child was my next-door neighbor, and I had a personal relationship with her family, which created an awkward situation for the both of us. More seriously, I was asked to contact DCPP because a child of another neighbor had reported abuse. Having personal relationships with these families made it difficult for me to perform my job duties. As a result, I asked to be transferred the following school year to a school in a neighborhood different from mine. The Monroe Township School District is now in a similar situation. While it is true there are benefits to having a township resident serve as the superintendent of our schools, I can only imagine there are also many challenges. I cannot speak for Mrs. Chanley, but during her tenure as principal of the middle school, I can imagine she too found herself in situations similar to mine. As a longtime resident of Monroe, I can also imagine she has formed personal relationships with many parents and staff members. Some of these parents are now sitting on our board, and Mrs. Chanley is their employee. When I first moved to Monroe in 2015, my oldest son was a middle school student. It quickly became evident to me and other parents that there was a personal relationship between Mrs. Skirby and Mrs. Chanley when a second parent organization was created after Mrs. Skirby failed to win reelection as president of the PTA. Just last month, photographs surfaced on social media of the superintendent attending a private event at the residence of the board president. Not only does this raise eyebrows in the communities, but it also creates the appearance of impropriety in the view of the public and puts our board and school district in a position vulnerable to scrutiny and further ethics complaints, all of which come at a cost. The School Ethics Act is clear when it says board members and administrators must avoid conduct which is in violation of their public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. Today, I speak to those of you who will remain on the board, along with any board member elect that will be involved in the reorganization meeting in January. Please seriously consider my comments and concerns when voting on the next board president and vice president. Please know that I do not make these comments with ill intent. Instead, they come from a place of true concern. Thank you for your time.
Yes, good evening.
I'm Dave Colallo, Monroe resident. Thank you all for your time and what you guys do here. I know a lot of you are volunteers, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. I liked when you were mentioning about safety as a priority for the children. That's something big for me as well. I think that's a, one of the main goals we have, keeping all of our children safe. My question for everybody here, if the referendum does not pass, what's the contingency plan? I'm nervous driving on the road where the middle school has trailers next to the side of the road. We have concrete barrier to protect them. I mean, there could be a car accident which causes issues there. What's our contingency plan?
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to speak on that?
So this evening, Mr. Teague, who would normally respond directly to that question, is not available, so I will speak in my current understanding without any specific details that I don't have. So it is my understanding that if, I don't like to speak in the negative, but if it was not to pass, the contingency plan is we have to follow protocol where we involve an attorney. It's not, it has been, I have been schooled that it is not where you just put it up once, it fails, you put it up the same one twice, it fails third time, and then the state has to make the residents pay for it. It is my understanding, and Mr. Gagliardi can provide further detail, that if it was to fail and we were to go, we would immediately go out for a referendum again, and then we would seek counsel to find out exactly what takes place if it was to fail again. So I welcome Mr. Gagliardi if he has additional information that he could provide.
Because my concern too is the number of unhoused children, as these housing developers are faster than the Board of Ed can build schools for them, unfortunately, which is the reality, and I would love to see them all housed in a school, not on a trailer. So that's my big concern, is if it doesn't pass, or if it does pass and it doesn't house enough children, how do we get more space for them?
Well, the one comment I would make, I wouldn't have an answer to that, to be honest, but the one comment I will make is when we look at unhoused students, we always, we can only project after five years, so we feel...
But they're also not looking, when they do the unhoused, the projections, they're not looking at current approved plans but not yet built.
We are, Demographers' report must guide the Board of Education's decisions, and then my recommendations, then we vote on the decisions. We can't go any further than that, so that's really the only comment I have for that. But I believe Mr. Gagliardi can provide you some additional information regarding if we have a failed referendum.
Thank you.
And if I may, I know that the current plan for the referendum is to have the trailers removed if it passes. So those trailers will not be there if the referendum does pass. Mr. Gagliardi?
So there is a case that may be 30 or 40 years old. It's well-known to folks who do school construction cases, cases in Ray Jamesburg, by the way, and it stands for the proposition the Commissioner of Education can compel the raising of funds for capital projects if the community's failure to adopt them creates the situation you're describing, which is where you have a large number of students and you can't safely educate them in the facilities you have. So it's rarely used. It's one the district can invoke if it needs to, but I agree with the superintendent that the immediate plan, if the first swipe at this failed, would be to try again. But the Department of Education said New Jersey will not let you go years and years without having sufficient facilities to house your children. So it's sort of ripcord you can pull if you need to. There have been times since that case where it has been pulled successfully, but it's nobody's Plan A. It can't be a Plan A. It's only after the community fails to provide the facilities that the children are entitled to under the Constitution.
And when it's in that litigation, how, what's the duration? Are we talking months or are we talking years?
Right now, things take even longer at the Department of Education than they used to, and it wasn't swift before. So it's difficult for me, as that agency and other agencies recover from COVID, to answer that question. It's not weeks, that's for sure. It would take, it would take a while, and it would depend in part on whether or not there was active opposition.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Pradeep Malam, Monroe Township. I see like three board members that are departing after this meeting or not exist here, but we should thank for their services, and it's good. I have a couple of comments. One, I'm piggybacking on Ms. Bozowski's comments about public meetings of the referendum. So did we get the final number for the, do we know the final number of the referendum or not yet?
We believe that that number will come sometime in January. Well, hopefully it'll come around the second week, third week of January, but currently we have no number provided to us.
Okay, so we are not, so you guys are not planning any sessions before that number comes out?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So...
We're going to, if you have multiple questions, if you can go through your questions and then we'll answer them.
So any public presentations will be only after we know the number and Board is okay with that number, right?
Is that your only question?
Yeah, on top of that, I want to like say about the personal relationship between board members and administration. So when we are living in a tight-knit community like this, there will be some friends, and you can't avoid friends. Just because my friend is a principal, I can't put my kid in that school because there will be a conflict of interest or there will be an extra focus on my kid. I can't do that, right? It's the same way, the people elected the board members. It's nobody appointed, and so, so I just want to leave it at that particular point. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think your first question, will we only go out and publicize or go to meetings when we have the final number?
So it is our intent, we wanted to wait for the new year. We are going to have, at a minimum, two to three town halls. That does not include being invited to the League of Women Voters and any other community that wants to invite us, so that is above and beyond. And we, our intent is not to go out and do that anyway until February, because we want to do it closer, and we feel realistically, we want to give everybody a chance they come back in January. So I am hopeful that the number will be provided to us by the third week of January.
My question is like that number has to be, once the DOE provides that number, does the board need to be approved, or they can trash that whole referendum that this number is not good enough for us?
Well, there's always not, it's my understanding, there is an opportunity that if you wanted to fight, I'm using that word, but I believe that's my understanding, you can fight and be in disagreement with the state. I don't know, Mr. Gagliardi, want to expand more on that, because I know that you can do that. I'm not saying that's anything we would do, but I do know that's a possibility. But other than that, I don't believe it requires like a resolution or a vote. Mr. Gagliardi?
I'll separate the question, raise it to two separate questions, right? Because the essence of the discussion is the public forum, right? So I do think that you'll wind up passing a resolution approving the actual number that the state approves. But there's nothing that would prevent you, depending on how the meeting schedule fell, from having a public forum with a number that you know the board is going to approve, right? So I don't think, depending on when the state does this, you know, you're going to find yourself, oh, we just had a meeting, I guess we have to wait three more weeks to the next board meeting and lose half the time between the state's announcement and the March referendum, if that's the timeline we're allowed to keep. So I, even if the board is going to bless the number, I don't think you need to wait for that event in order to have the public meetings you're describing. Does that answer your question, sir?
Partially, but like, let's say, if the, so our estimate is 103 million, and state comes at like, we are giving only 13 million, so 90 million out of the pocket of the residents. So that 90 million out of the pocket of residents, that needs to be approved from the board or not?
The board is going to have, whatever the Department of Education says we approve for you, my expectation is the board is going to say, yes, this is satisfactory, it's what we're going to submit to the voters.
Okay.
Because the board, as you just heard, could challenge that, could appeal it.
Yeah.
Right? So the board will have a decision to make, but I'm saying they don't have to formally make that decision before engaging with the public.
Okay.
If it's clear that it's something they're going to accept. There's nothing that requires you to have that vote before any public forum is held.
Okay, got you. Thanks.
Thank you, and I would just like to add comments to the last part of what you said. And that goes for all of our board members. We all live in our community. We, most of us have children that go to our schools, and in volunteering in our school district and being part of our community, we do get to know our principals, our teachers, those that work in our buildings. Becoming a board member, we take an oath of, an ethical oath, and I know myself, I take that oath very seriously, and I do not believe at any time, being a board member, that I have violated the oath of ethics. Who I choose to have in my private home, at my private parties, is my business as a private citizen. I am allowed to have a life outside of the school district. Who I want to invite to my home, I can, so long as I do not have a quorum of the board and we are conducting business. That is what we are not allowed to do. We are not to organize ourselves outside of a public meeting and have, have any conversations or conduct any board business. That is in violation of the sunshine law. I have never violated that. I know the law very well, and I have not, in my opinion, violated any ethics. Complaints that have been brought against me have been about Facebook posts, one being about our council race last year that had nothing to do with the Board of Education. I have not been challenged on what I've done here as a board member at a meeting, and it is inappropriate to bring up issues that are false. I never ran for an election on a PTO that I lost. It was a long, very long, very detailed issue that took place at our middle school that has no part to be discussed here at a Board of Education meeting. It was many years ago. The false narrative that has been going around is completely inaccurate, and to bring it here to try to...
Slandering back there.
Slander or harass or whatever, manipulate this board before its reorganization meeting is very shameful, in my opinion. Again, all of our board members are parents. We live in our community. We have every right to become a parent. And I can tell you, when I do write to a principal in my child's school or to a teacher, I am careful. I use my personal email address. I sign it as the parent of my child of that school. I am still a parent, and I still am able to advocate for my children in our schools.
Thank you.
So I thank you for bringing that forth, Mr. Maralda.
Thank you for reassuring that, Ms. Skirby. If we go little recent past, right after one, one of our board member, he resigns, right after the rest of the board met in a restaurant, and they did the business, along with one of the director-level employees also exist over there, and they made mockery of the gentleman that resigned, and then they did all these things. So we just want to make reassuring that this board is not going into that role. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak from the public?
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I'm calling to ask why there are no revised building capacities available on the district website regarding the referendum plan. When Dr. Alvik was superintendent, her administration put forth three possible referendum plans, and there was a chart that listed all eight schools, their current building capacity, the added building capacity where that plan to go forward, and then the revised building capacity. And this information... And this information was important, because it gives the public an idea of how much, how many unhoused students will we have left if the referendum passes. And there is no such information on the district website today, and I would want some transparency on that. Also, on the district website, there's a timeline. And the time, according to that timeline, it says that we're going to have a referendum in April. And I want to know if we're still on track for that, because I could have, because I believe Mr. Gagliardi said something about a March referendum. So I want to get some understanding as to why there's a discrepancy there and why we don't have revised building capacity numbers. I mean, what will Apple Garden's capacity be when this renovation expansion gets complete? We don't know.
All right, Mrs. Chanley, would you like to discuss the referendum?
As far as building capacity, I would be happy to have a conversation with Dr. Lehman and also with Mr. Take, and we will sit down, and we will go through that, and we will provide that information. Thank you.
So you don't know, you don't know right now how, what, how many unhoused students you would have left if this passes?
Respectfully, we make sure that we follow the guidelines that we need, and all the information is provided. No, I do not currently have directly in front of me the specifics, but as I said, and I will be happy to repeat, the information will be provided. You asked for us to be transparent and to have it posted, and I will do so. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate the fact that it'll be posted. I also wanted to get an answer to my question about the timeline. Why does the district website say April, the referendum will be in April, and yet Mr. Gagliardi said March? If you could explain that discrepancy.
Mrs. Chanley?
Yes, we are very excited that we're currently in the queue to be moved up for a March referendum. We are currently waiting to see if that's a possibility. And the reason for that is, and I wish Mr. Take was here to explain the specifics of it, but Mr. Take had brought to our attention that there are six listed dates that are, we are permitted to have a referendum. It was brought to his attention by the electorate, is that the right terminology?
Yeah.
Thank you. But I have to make sure I say the right word. By the electorate of that, due to the fact that there is no other voting, there is no other voting going on, particularly in April, that we would need to then pick an additional date. So we went ahead and went to the state, we utilized counsel to make sure that we followed all appropriate protocol and procedure. And it is, to my understanding, and I believe Mr. Gagliardi is ready and can speak on it, that we would be moving the referendum date up.
Okay, because this timeline was posted months ago, and I thought that that was something that would be known well in advance. So I'm surprised about this late change in the date of the referendum, so it's just a little surprising.
I do want to make the statement again. We went ahead and conferred and confirmed the date well in advance. It wasn't until the individual from the township spoke to Mr. Take, where the understanding was brought to our attention that it would not be April, and it would need to be another date.
So you think it's the township's fault that the district?
I'm going to make a statement again, and then I'm going to stop. I am not in any way, because we know that you take things out of context, I'm not making any statement that it's anyone's fault. I'm letting you know the conversation that occurred between two individuals, one that happens to work for the township, and then one has, happens to be Mr. Take. If he was present, he would be speaking rather than third-person conversation. Unfortunately, he's not here. So I'm making the statement for those of you that are here, and for those of you that are watching at home. I am placing no blame on anyone. I appreciate the wonderful working relationship we have with the township. I'm letting you know the situation that occurred, and I thank you very much.
And we're thrilled to get it going for March.
Mr. Gagliardi, is there anything you need to add?
So you can have this referendum if the town were having an election in April, and you could have this election in November along with the, any election that's held. Second Tuesday after the, the first Tuesday after the first Monday, right? We know the Constitution. Statute also provides that there are four dates when you can have a special school election. Doing this by memory, but I believe it's the fourth Tuesday in January, the second Tuesday in March, the fourth Tuesday in September, and the second Tuesday in December. So when the town advised Mr. Take that there was nothing that was going to be put out for a vote in April, which the town can do, the district had a choice, which is to accelerate the process and try to get it approved for a vote in March, or decelerate the process and have it put out to vote in September. The hope is that with the state approval coming in January, if it comes, that you'll be able to do it in March. So we can't finalize that until we hear from the state, and we do not control that process. The only thing we control is getting all of the information before the state in a timely fashion. The district has been advised that the state has all the information it needs. And so if we get the approval in the second or third week of January, as the superintendent said, then it's my expectation that the Board will be in a position to approve the vote based upon the March date rather than the September date.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Our next item on the agenda is our closed session resolution. We resolve that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subject matters. I think I have an old version. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege. And I think we added one, right? Confidential personnel matter and discussion regarding MTSAA negotiations. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just appoint the Secretary.
And we need to appoint a temporary?
I move to appoint Ms. Bierman as a temporary secretary for our confidential meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Do you want to estimate how long?
I would say would probably be about an hour for closed session. Could be a little sooner, could be a little later, but I would estimate probably about an hour. Thank you.
Are you going to take any action, other than adjourning when you come back?
Yes. Again. All right, good evening, we are back from closed session. We have no action, so our next item on the agenda is our public forum. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is on January 3rd, 2023. It is our reorganization meeting. That concludes our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You got one, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and have a very happy holidays. Good night.
Okay, thank you very much.